All right, I want to call to order a regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. It is Monday, March 6, 2023, at 6:31 PM. I will just take a moment to welcome Karen Cote, who's new to the Selectmen's Office beginning today. So I ask you for a little patience as Karen joins up for the first time tonight. The next item of business is Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I may, I'd like to make a motion to add something to the agenda. And I'll do this at the very end of new business, SBC legal issues.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of adding item E, SBC legal issues?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of minutes in your packet, you should have two sets of minutes. A regular meeting on February 21st and a special meeting on February 27th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 21st to get things rolling.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Where the vote is for CIP plan. It's correctly noted that I voted no, but I also voted no because the plan fell apart in the out years. That was the reason why I voted no. And also for the second where we voted on the budget. Again, it correctly notes that my vote was no. But the principal reason why I voted no was because of the CIP plan. Although I did make the comment that stated there about open space. So just points of clarification.
Any other discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, and then we have minutes from the joint meeting of the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen on February 27th.
I move that we accept the minutes of February 27th of 2023, joint meeting of the Board of Finance.
There's second.
No second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Present to speak, if there's anyone present to speak, I ask you to state your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone in the room present to speak? Mr. Tom?
Big tele, 49, Earl. First, wanted to see what the status update of the FOIA request that I had submitted. I don't know if you, Mike or Jim, have an update on that. Also, when I submitted that FOIA request, you had emailed me saying, hey, we're working on it and such. When I submitted the lawyer, the explanation from the lawyer, I never received that there was confirmation that even though I have a stamped copy of it. I forgot who signed it, somebody in Town Hall stamped it, but I haven't received notification through email saying, hey, we're working on this. So just wanted to bring that up. Touch upon the letter of intent real quick here. I saw that Liza had signed it, but there's no date for, next to her signature. There's a stamp saying it was received, I believe, on the 17th, but that stamp does not indicate that that's when she signed it or anything. So I know there's some, you know, on top page, top page one says November 4th. Speculation it may have been signed on November 4th, but it could have been pre-signed months ago, I don't know, nobody knows. So when did she sign that? In front of who did she sign that? And who directed her to sign that? Was it you, SBC? Who? Page 33 slash 34 out of 134 pages, when it comes to town ordinances, referring to town contracts for purchase and sales ordinance. Section 9, any contract, any contract entered into by and between the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the Town of Wellington and any third party shall be filed with the Town Clerk of Wellington. Now, I have not seen anything in minutes where the Board had approved the letter of intent, the bottom line. Now, I know that there can be discussion back and forth and such. So there is, I interpret, because in section 7, it says legally binding and enforceable, which is a contract. If it is a contract, why did the Town vote on it, the Board of Selectmen vote on it, which it should have been? And if we want to say it's not a contract, we have to go into a purchase and sales contract for the land, which then has to be signed by the Board of Selectmen. Just want to put that out there, I don't know how that's going to go. My assumption is you would have to abstain, obviously. I'm guessing Jim would say, and Mike would say.
Is that two minutes?
So just wanted to.
Wrap your comments up, sir.
And that's.
Anyone else in the room present to speak? Anyone online present to speak? Can you? Anyone online? Right, going once, going twice. You'll have an opportunity at the end of the meeting if you so choose. Correspondence, I'm going to apologize, you don't have a list of correspondence. I kept the office running for two weeks, but that just, there's a file of sorts. So we'll get something before our next meeting. I can tell you there was nothing of significant urgency. All right. Curse Selectmen's report. Let's see, I have no new information on the Steve Grants for the septic at the Old Town Hall. Lots of, nothing new to report there. As far as the truck lease, this was on the call, on the agenda later today to call a town meeting. And so we'll talk about that when we get there. ARPA, ARPA had a meeting just prior to this meeting where there was a discussion on some projects. We closed the project that was the second ambulance at Wellington number one, and that returned about $3,200 back to the fund. So we're about $2,800 short if all projects were funded, and there's still a couple pending funding. There was a public hearing tonight that included one of the Selectmen CIP items, which was the facility study of town facilities. So that would help us assess maintenance, structural needs, as well as the meeting the needs of of the services in town. And so ARPA did vote to extend that money. We had sent that to CIP, CIP sent it to ARPA. And this included the library to help assist with some of the project outline that they need there. So we'll be moving forward with that. I'll bring to this board an RFP that we'll take a look at to go out for those services. So I look forward to that. And again, what we have to determine is if we include the fire departments, but it will include the library, the schools, the senior center, the town office building. I think I got them all, they're right through my head. So you'll be seeing that on your agenda soon. I added into your packets information regarding the grand list, and I think Kara's on, it's probably at the back of your packets. So she received, I apologize, I'm looking for my notes, the grand list from Kara. It's, the final number is $483,751,710. I have way too many notes, so they're not here. It's about just over $18 million above the 2021 grand list, and about $7 million of that is Loews. And Kara, I don't know if you can hear us. Or Nicole. Yeah, so Loews equated to I want to say it was about $500,000 of taxable income. So that was completed, a tax revenue, that was completed last Tuesday. So Donna, you utilized this new information, it's certainly in a most of old form. Oh, here we go, sorry. The preliminary Loews added five, about five and a half million to real estate, and just over 2 million in personal property for a total of seven, just over 7.6. And so this is just the abstract, this is before BAA had met. So this is pre any adjustments. And it was 18,552,110 dollar increase over the 2021 grand list. So I want to thank Kara came on board with certainly a lot of work to do, but I was happy to see some growth in our grand list. So if you have any questions, I would ask you to compile them, I can make sure that Kara can answer.
I just wanted to comment that the two things I feel good about, one is the growth in the list, and two is I feel like there's been a lot of effort in that office to clean up.
Yes.
And improve the accuracy, which I think is really great.
Absolutely.
So two big wins. Yeah, that's really important.
It was really important to us, and you know, we talked about adding this position as moving from a part-time position to a full share of a full-time employee with the Town of Bolton, where we get half of, you know, the 37 hour week. And we've got more than that out of Kara since she got here because she knew there was a lot of work to do on this. We did extend for a month, but it was critical that we be able to get all of the work done and not just file something. So I want to commend Kara and Nicole, the Assessor's Office, on the work that we've done.
I would just like to know, how does that stack up against the residential side of things? Loews is just a giant, you know, whale in the ocean. Be nice and, you know, because
Yeah.
I like to see a little bump up in resonance, because I know we're fixing a lot of foundations and things like that. I like to see how that's progressing. I'm sure it's slow, but.
Yeah, I agree, and so what I haven't had to do, had the opportunity to do is compare it to the last year. In the past, we've received the information in a little bit different way. Every assessor presents it a little bit different. And so what we got was a good comparison, so I'll work for our next meeting to get you some comparison numbers, the difference, the different values. And if you have any questions in the meantime, you can send them off to Kara and myself, and we will get that done for you. The, we did receive a FOIA request, I will tell you, it was a voluminous request. And we are in the, working on gathering the data, and IT is assisting in gathering some of that, the mail data. Public Works, Mr. Spazano is in the room.
All right, we've been chip and brush. Every time a season of the wind comes, there's marlins come down, so we've been doing that. The trucks have been washed, we've been digging out waterways. We've been plowing and sanding quite a few times in the last couple of weeks there, it seemed to take a turn. We've been working on the fleet, keeping that running. We've been trimming around guardrails, and we've been up at our pit, we're cleaning up up there.
I may have made the mistake of speaking about our favorable snow budget. So to a public works crew, I'm sorry. That's what you get, you speak and then it happens. So we're still in really good shape there, but they put in a lot of hours in the last week. So, okay. All right, moving.
Andy was out, chip and brush before the storm, too.
Oh, yes, they, I mean, they've been working hard, they had a couple of, I think they had back-to-back 3:00 AM starts, and they were here all day, so, you know, kudos to them, once again, for keeping things running and safe. All right, new business. This item is resolution for open space and watershed land acquisition grants agreement. So as you know, we put, we had a grant application before DEEP for the Talmage property. And we, we did get favorable return on that. So now we're getting to the point where they're ready to turn over the funds to us. And so in order to do that, a resolution must be made for the state. So I'm going to make the following motion, then we can have discussion, and I believe Kathy Demers is on if they speak to us. So I move, whereas the Town of Wellington has applied for and received a grant for financial assistance under the Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Program, OSWA, established and administered by the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, DEEP pursuant to section 7-131D of the Connecticut General Statutes, resolved that Erica G. Waschinsky, as the first selectwoman of the Town of Wellington, is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the Town of Wellington an open space and watershed land acquisition grant agreement and a conservation and public recreation easement and agreement for town property known as Talmage State, OSWA number 624, with the DEEP, and to manage said land as open space land pursuant to section 7-131D of the Connecticut General Statutes. Be it further known that Erica G. Waschinsky was selected as first selectwoman on November 7, 2017, and her term of office began on November 21, 2017, and will continue until November 21, 2023. As the first selectwoman, Erica G. Waschinsky serves as the chief executive officer for the Town of Wellington and is duly authorized to enter into agreements and contracts on behalf of the Town of Wellington. Is there a second? Second, if I might, discussion. Kathy, do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, just, this is just the usual boilerplate type of grant agreement and conservation easement paperwork that the state requires when we receive open space money from them. And we did have the town's attorney, you know, look through all of the contract.
So there's still some adjustments being made to the contracts, we're not quite ready to sign those, is the first step.
So this is a grant to?
We received a grant for the Talmage property, we received that while we had confirmation that we see that back in the fall.
Yeah, well, it was actually June of last year, but it takes almost a year to get the money.
And we actually got more than we had anticipated. We had expected 50% and we got.
We got 65% match, which was $81,000.
Just refresh my memory, are we purchasing a piece of the property or?
Final piece.
The final piece, because I remember.
Right, it was 16 acres, which was the final piece from the Talmage Estate. And that's on Mason Road, so it abuts the other Talmage Conservation Property, as well as the Nolton Track. So it, you know, increases the open space in that area to over 600 acres when you combine it with the Yukon Moss Forest.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. In your packet, you should have two tax refunds.
If you signed something, it's about action.
Do you?
Do we have?
No. No, the Town Clerk actually certified the action to place in my meeting. She had to send in a certification, so that's what I read from was the entire.
Thank you for clarifying.
All right, so I will move to refund Justin Narderno a certificate of correction in the amount of $401.82.
Second.
Seconded by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I will move to award a CAR leasing LTV, refund an amount of $245.84. Seconded by Mike, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, the next item, item C, vault heating cooling system replacement. So we're looking at potentially selecting a vendor tonight. In our budget for this current fiscal year, if you recall, I had added some funds. I had added about $7,000 to replace the heating cooling system in the vault. We've had some issues in the summer of 2021, had some things fixed. And at that time, we're told that it's, we'd have limited abilities to fix the unit as it was approaching its end of life. So we began working to put this in, in our budget. Based on dollars, then you can see how things have certainly changed as far as cost. So you have before you three bids to replace that system. It's, I'll start by saying it is vital that the vault maintain a constant temperature to preserve the records in there. So this is something critical that we do, and again, we did budget for within our operating budget. So the three quotes you have in front of you, one from Stafford Mechanical for $10,518.72, EMCOR for $7,250, and Energy Unlimited for $7,400. I don't know if Troy is working with Robin to do this, and then you can see Troy is recommending we go with EMCOR for $7,250. It is, it'll put a mini split, which is already what's in there, Troy. Anything you'd like to share with us about the three bids you have in front of us?
They're all compatible, they're different brands, but they're all compatible by BTUIs, you know, the heating and cooling with that. The warranty, I believe it was Stafford Mechanical, that if in their contract, if they were to go with them, that they would, it has to be maintained by them. So we have a contract with EMCOR currently right now, so it would, that would void the warranty more or less if it was worked on by another contractor for their, it says in, I don't know, but that's what it was for, so.
And they were significantly more expensive, $10,500.
Troy, how old's the one that's in there now?
I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know.
I haven't found data that gave me that.
I know it's hard getting parts and pieces for it, there's quite a few times Robin calls me, you know, hey, can you come down? And you flip the switch, and you kind of give it a little bump, and then it comes back on, so it's.
When they came in and did this repair, it was the compressor failure, it was hot in there, and there becomes a real concern about moisture, et cetera, so.
Yeah, I was just wondering, how old was it, was it still under warranty or anything like that?
It was not under warranty.
Yeah, clearly out, yeah. They were only good for about 10 or 12 years. Going to sound funny, but if I remember, I think it was installed right around the time that we had the 275th anniversary, because we did our meetings in the vault, because we had the new air conditioning there.
Twenty, so that would be.
The 275th Anniversary Committee. So that's just almost 25.
No, just over, so well.
It's 23 years.
Yeah, 22, 21, only because I'm about to have a 21 year old. Oh, two, so, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, we see 20 years, I'd like to see things get a little bit more light than that. This is one that's, you know, run all the time, as opposed to some of the other systems, which cooling systems were only working in the summer, this is working all day, every day. So I'm going to, based on that recommendation, I'm going to move to award the vault heating cooling system replacement project to EMCOR Services in the amount of $7,250. Seconded by Jim, discussion. Troy, this was something that they is we'll get this in a decent amount of time.
Yeah, I believe he said it was maybe a few weeks out or something. He said as soon as we do get approvals, that we should let him know as soon as we can put it on order.
So no big supply issues, okay, that's good to know.
Good time here to buy.
I suppose, yeah. So, okay, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, Robin and Rachel will rest easy, their vault will be soon, carefully maintained. All right, the next item is to call a town meeting. If you recall, we had lengthy discussions about the vehicle that we had had on order from Putnam Ford to replace the Public Works Director's vehicle, and they canceled our order. Donna and I felt that it was important that we take the process all the way through, which meant going back and revising the CIP plan. And so Board of Finance did that, and they recommended that we call the town meeting. To do so, I will also let you know that the bank has taken a look at the specs of the new vehicle and approved that as far as funding goes. So they've given their blessing, and I believe that happened before we went to Board of Finance, so we confidently say that. And this will come in under budget, and some of those dollars will be used to outfit the vehicle. And I think what was left, which wasn't much, would just go towards
Like bar.
One of the, no, it wouldn't all be used, so what was left would go toward a lease status.
Okay.
It would go back into.
And they were okay with that?
They were fine with, yeah, that, they actually guided us on how we could actually do this, and then what steps we needed to take. So like most things we do, we do this with much guidance. So I will make a motion, Town of Wellington, notice and warning, special town meeting. The electors of the Town of Wellington and all persons who are entitled to vote in town meeting on the matters mentioned in the following warning are hereby warned and notified to meet in town meeting at the Town Office Building, 40 Old Farms Road, Wellington, immediately following the Board of Selectmen regular meeting at 6:30 PM on Monday, March 20, 2023, for the following purpose. Item one, to see if the townspeople on the recommendation of the Board of Finance will change the vehicle reference in the approved CIP plan from a Ford F350 to a Chevy Tahoe SSV 4x4, as well as the accessories needed to outfit the vehicle.
Second.
Seconded by Mike, discussion. I would have hoped to get this, I was trying to hold up to the annual town meeting, but not only Troy's vehicle having problems, the delivery of this vehicle is coming. It's, it should be ready in a couple of weeks, any, anytime now. And I think that probably goes to the fire department vehicle as well. So time was of the essence, we certainly don't want to lose out on it because of that, so.
I think we're doing the right thing, the townspeople approve the truck. If you have a different kind of truck, we should go back and just double check with them.
Yeah, I mean, in a perfect world, we would have known this before we entered into a lease agreement for a truck we were never going to get. So, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and just before we forget. Okay. Brings us to item E, SBC legal, Jim?
Yeah, I've been getting a lot of phone calls about what's this letter of intent thing, you know, what's going on, you know? A pull that Liza signed it. Then I'm wondering like, okay, I gotta get a hold of that and take a look at it, and then, you know, and I have some of those questions, like, I don't recall us taking action on that. So maybe you can just refresh me what's going on there with that.
Sure.
And it'd be in terms of like, you know, how we have an annual list of correspondence and things like that. But if there's something like legal or something like that, maybe, you know, I like to have that stuff called out before us.
Yeah, so this was SBC made, took action, I believe it was November 9, on a piece of property.
I don't remember the dates.
Yeah, and for obvious reasons, there was a conflict. So I, after consulting our attorneys, it was the term, I was not signing the document, the letter of intent, it's a letter of intent, it's a non-binding agreement to enter, to work to enter into a purchase and sales agreement. So it's, I think it's important to say it's a non-binding, it's going to bound the town to actually, sorry, no dollars whatsoever. And so yes, Liza did sign that, I did not. I hear some with concerns about the dates are on it, I did not sign it. I can't speak to those specifics, and it is held in the Town Clerk's office. So I will tell you that, like anything else, I hear the concerns. Jim, I would encourage you to direct, you know, some concerns to this office so that we can address them. But like anything else, it will be reviewed for matter of course, but our attorneys don't see anything out of the ordinary with this. And like all of these matters, that's something that typically I could sign there, done all the time. It was not a matter of business before the Board of Selectmen, which is why it didn't come before this board. Some have asked me why Mike didn't sign it, Mike was not a member of the Board of Selectmen at that time.
That I'm sure of.
That is 100% true, so therefore he would not have, nor was he even the SBC Chair at that time. So I uh I.
Well, I'm just, I'm concerned it's just about a legal action was taken, even if it's only a memo or letter.
It's a non, it's a non-binding agreement, so it had, it takes no um action, but um not anticipating this on our agenda. I certainly um will ask our town head attorney to um share any information with you.
It just, it just came up over the weekend. I.
It didn't, this was signed some time ago in November.
I know, but somehow I got flooded with a bunch of things.
I can tell you.
I can probably add a little bit of history to it, if it helps the conversation at all. Um this was previous to me being chair, uh as you said, on the S B C. The um previous chair worked with an attorney um to negotiate the agreement. Um I would use, at least in my estimation, I would use slightly different terminology when I say it's not binding. It is binding in the sense of only the things that are enumerated in the document. So the document itself is binding for those things, but it is not a binding agreement committing the town to a purchase or anything like that. So in that sense, it's a non-binding agreement uh in general terms, um because it's not binding the town to an action. It's just binding the signers representing the town and the seller to um an understanding, basically, in in layman's terms, to an understanding. And um
In legal terms, it is a non-binding agreement.
So maybe in legal terms, that's called a non-binding agreement. In in layman's terms, people say, well, you signed it, it's binding you to something. So it just bound the two parties to a certain understanding. That's a, um not a commitment to purchase, not a commitment of funds. And I was not part of I was very distantly and peripherally involved in the creation and in the negotiation of it. Um and uh the previous chair was the one who kind of spearheaded that and worked with an attorney hired by the S B C um to make sure that it followed, you know, whatever was the appropriate things to protect the townspeople in the S B C. And that is what I know of the history of the document.
Do we know who asked Liza to sign it?
I wasn't part of that. I don't know.
Okay.
So I, if you'd like to follow, we'll get you um information, but um this is something that will uh is being reviewed by our town attorney. Again.
Okay, and we can follow all those precautions there.
Yes. I'll tell you again, it is a non-binding agreement. The town provides the town to absolutely no dollars. Okay. Um moving on to old business, the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget update. I presented our budgets to the Board of Finance on Thursday. Um if you recall, we um approved a budget of uh four million um so getting my gun soon, just over four point three million dollars or an eight point three four percent increase. After we took that action, uh we locked into fuel prices that were less than we had budgeted for. So significant dollars on the Board of Ed side. Um less um dollars on our side, but felt it was important to readjust the budget to take a look at uh real numbers that we're budgeting, and that's based on the quantities of fuel that we anticipated. So you have two things in front of you. You have the additional memo that I presented to the Board of Finance on Thursday, and then you have um those up-to-date changes from um Donna that were done to the budget. So you can see that there were three areas where um heating cost was reduced and three areas where um diesel was reduced. And an additional line item within the tax collector's budget where we had anticipated um the cost of some software to increase, and she was since told that it would remain flat. So although it was uh a nine hundred and fifty dollar change, I thought it was important that we reduce um any known budget items if we didn't need them, um you know, complete transparency. So I presented a budget to, and then there were some C I P things that were cleaned up um on Donna's end. So that brought the budget down to four million, two hundred ninety-five thousand twenty-eight dollars um or an eight point one seven percent increase. So those are the only things changed between the budget that we approved and I presented to them. Um what normally, you know, like, we could say I could go back to them and when they get to their appropriations, consider they cut them. But I felt it was important to just take them out of the conversation from the beginning. So um they will begin our budget and the revenue budget and C I P, where the last presented last Thursday. They will now work for the next two, potentially three weeks um to um finalize some appropriations to bring to a budget hearing and then in your town meeting and finally the referendum in May. So I'd encourage uh people uh to attend or listen in on those meetings as you will. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
So.
It wasn't much.
Taking it about that direction.
Yes. So every dollar counts. And again, if we knew we didn't need it, I I'll, I'll continue to do the same. We are constantly looking at things, and if I can make adjustments um that way. Sometimes it means going up, like we did with fuel last year. This year it means going down. So you can see we locked in at two point nine two five six compared to this uh what we had budgeted for three nineteen and three point oh three four.
I'd like to get our diesel prices.
Yeah. You'd like.
Certainly, that's almost half of what's at the pump right now.
So, and that's um, they're pretty, they're both within pennies of what we're currently paying. So that's why we're able to see a reduction.
And we, and we locked in for how long?
It's just for a year.
Just for a year?
Yeah.
It's okay.
It's okay.
It's the fiscal year.
It's the fiscal year, yeah. So that will begin July one because we purchased a certain uh number.
Yep.
So we're bound to those um dollars. And then we'll start this again next um December, looking at prices. All right, next item is ethics policy. I left this on. You two had an opportunity to.
I have looked at it and what I'm wrestling with right now is the discussion that I'm I'm trying to figure out, trying to navigate the discussion of, well, maybe we shouldn't have a local ethics policy. And I don't really understand why. I'm still trying to figure out what some of the opposition is to having a a local policy and so that I can factor that into my thoughts. Um I'm not challenging it that it's wrong. I just don't understand really what, there, this has been going on for years. I just don't know the history.
It keeps coming back. So, you know, I haven't seen a draft before and um you know, I think it it it's definitely come up over decades. And there's those who think there should be one and those who think there should not. And ultimately, it hasn't moved forward um beyond that. But to to those um concerns from, you know, some residents who, where do we take our concerns about board and commission members? Um, you know, this is one way to address it. So I'll keep it on the agenda. Um and we're gonna continue to talk, Jim.
Hmm.
So, real.
Particularly once we're kind of out of budget season and stuff, we can, I'm hoping there's some time.
So maybe I'll take it off the agenda for the next couple of meetings. We're still working on a budget.
I think there are a couple other projects that I'd like to see us get back to once we're out of budget.
Yes, and I will tell you. Yes. Yeah, okay. So we'll do that. All right.
I mean, towards the very end of that, I mean, early summer or summer's always quiet. That's a as.
Did we not learn anything from the snow budget discussion?
I mean, we were talking about, you know, at the Kettle Rock property last summer, right? So.
I mean, we talked about that on a pop and on for years. So it's certainly not going to go away. But, you know, I think if if it's not action this board wants to take to move forward, then we need to, you know, have a thorough discussion to explain why or or what we would do instead. So, okay. All right, that brings us to President to Speak. Is there anyone in the room present to speak? Mr. Tella?
It's all forty-nine, Earl. Uh it literally says section seven. Verbal. Legally binding and enforceable. I don't know how you can get non-binding out of section seven. It literally says it right there. It also says, it uh first paragraph talks about entering into a real estate purchase agreement. Uh Liza, I know, had mentioned a few days ago uh that she had the authority to sign the law, the letter of intent. Uh she said it was procedural. Procedures are written, correct? If this is a procedure, where is this procedure that allows her to do such? Um I would like, and I know many other people, not just myself, like to see Erica will go on record defending her actions for voting on spending money on her family property and advocating for the referendum to be in a position to be passed, knowing that the money will go to the family property. Um I've talked to the state and the state said they don't have jurisdiction, but they said if this was a state employee, they would be violating their ethics department, uh ethics code. Why do we not have the same standard as the state? Why are we lowering the bar uh the the bar to benefit our family? Thank you.
Anyone else in the room present to speak? Mr. Blessington?
John Blessington, twenty-nine, Mason Road. I'm a little bit confused about this uh this letter of intent. Uh it was signed by Selectmen Boards. But under what, again, under what authorities? She was not a member of the S B C, which I would assume that if this uh contract between the S B C and the uh Wyszynski Estate that a member of the S B C, a ranking member, at least a member, would have signed it for them. But she was a uh member of the Board of Selectmen at the time. But if she's signing it as a member of the Board of Selectmen, then this means that this is an uh action taken by the Board of Selectmen, which means that she presumably talked to the first selectman about it. And if she talked to the first selectman about it, outside of a meeting, outside of a warned meeting, then an action was taken. And this was an illegal meeting because uh Mr. Villa tells me he didn't know anything about such a meeting. Um just, just thoughts to.
Thank you. Anyone online present to speak? Mr. Latencik?
Peter Latincich, ninety-seven Trask Road. I want to also echo these concerns tonight about the school building project. This is a substantial project, as uh Selectman McCoo has referred to it, possibly the largest project in Wellington's history. It's very important that when the townspeople make this decision, that we understand everything about it. It needs to be clear to the townspeople what's involved with this project. Tonight's responses don't demonstrate that. Um we, we have letters of intent that were submitted by the School Building Committee to the Board of Selectmen. And we don't know now if the Board of Selectmen acted on it, why they did or didn't act on it, was it signed or not signed? All of that is is unclear. Now, I I don't doubt that this can be found out. What's troubling to me is the response. Oh, well, the attorney will tell us. I think I need this board to tell me what happened. I don't want the attorney to tell me. I, I want my Board of Selectmen to be accountable to the townspeople. It, I, I don't like this constant reference to, to experts outside our town. I know you're not attorneys, but you can certainly tell me if the Board of Selectmen acted on the letter of intent that was submitted by a school building committee. I don't think that's difficult. Even more troubling is that I'm learning at my last S B C meeting and again tonight, that a Freedom of Information Act request has been submitted regarding communication by the School Building Committee. I'm a member of that committee and I don't know about it. And if the public has questions about this project, that's what freedom of information is, sharing of information. Hearing again that the attorney is working on it sounds like you're withholding information to me. And and that's disturbing as well. And and it's, it, it just seems part of the overall lack of transparency about this entire project, ending with the lack of even a public hearing prior to our town meeting. I don't agree with that. And I strongly urge the Board of Selectmen to step forward and explain their actions. And no better place would that be? Them, a public hearing where we can ask questions and discuss these things in in a polite and reasonable way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak? Anyone else going one, twice? All right, move on to good and welfare. Um I had the opportunity of attending the uh first annual uh Winter Wonderland Family Formal event that the P T A put on. Um it was a great event. It was their first big event uh post-COVID. And so kudos uh to the P T A and and their families who came out. It was a great event. So um hopefully folks, more folks will attend uh next year. Mobile Food Share is um every other week. The next Mobile Food Share will be Wednesday, March fifteenth. So that's next Wednesday from eleven to eleven thirty. It's open to all residents as well as uh all residents in Connecticut, not just Wellington. As always, if you can, support our small businesses and restaurants. Uh reminder that not only is there a town meeting that we called today, but a town meeting on March fourteenth at seven P M in the gym at Hall School um regarding the school building project, as well as the referendum on March twenty-eighth from six A M to eight P M in this room um here at the Town Office Building. And I have the report from Troop C from February. There were three hundred and twenty-three total calls for service that included fourteen accidents, thirteen criminal investigations, zero burglaries, zero larcenies, one hundred and eighty-two non-reportable matters and six arrests. Karen, I'll give this all to you, I figured. Um there were a hundred and nineteen motor vehicle enforcement, uh total traffic stops, zero onsite D U Is, one arrest, no misdemeanor summons, forty-eight infractions, twenty written warnings and fifty verbal warnings. All right, seeing no other business before us.
I move that be adjourned.
Seven eighteen P M. I'll second, I'll second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Almost got me. Stop. And if you go to.
And.